The May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Bernards Township Planning Board is now called to order. Please rise for the flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting of the planning board of the township of Bernards was posted on a bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building, Collier Lane, Basking Bridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Bernardsville News, Whippany, New Jersey, to the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey, on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Bernards Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after ten PM and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after ten thirty PM. Roll call Ms. Kiefer, please.
Certainly. Chairwoman Pardici.
Here.
Mr. Baumann has indicated he is unable to attend this evening. Mr. Crane?
Here.
Mr. Demersian?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McNally?
Here.
Ms. Manduke?
Here.
Ms. Mastroangelo?
Here.
Mr. Saville has indicated he will be arriving late this evening. Mr. Iorio?
Here.
Mr. Malik is unable to attend this evening. Mr. Banish?
Here.
Mr. Drill?
Here.
Mr. Plavier is unable to attend this evening. Mr. Schley?
Here.
For the record, Ms. Kiefer is present. Madam Chair, you have a quorum. You may proceed.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to excuse the absences of Mr. Baumann and Mr. Malik, please.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is another landscaping committee. Aren't we the lucky ones? Appointment of the landscape committee for Fellowship Senior Living Incorporated, Block ninety-three zero-one, Lot thirty-three, eight thousand Fellowship Road, PB thirteen, Darts zero zero six. Can you give a, just explain a little bit of why, you know, how this is coming up?
This relates to the, I think it was twenty sixteen approval, the bigger health center and community center theater expansion, not the most recent fellowship application that we saw. Yeah, this was the more lively hearing.
Oh, yeah.
It's about landscaping along. There's one adjoining property, the Pinson property. Ms. Pinson, Mrs. Pinson is actually going to be invited to this inspection, but it's...
And the resolution provides for that, right?
Yes, the resolution provides for notice to her and fellowship is aware of that and they're just about ready to go. And so we just wanted to get a committee appointed.
Have they been talking to each other or is she coming into this thing cold?
No, I've asked Fellowship about the progress of that and they said they've been in touch. I don't know the extent of it, but certainly will. I mean, I have her contact information. I'll reach out to her myself. But Fellowship is responsible for giving her, I think it's two weeks' notice on that one.
What's the timing of it?
I don't think it's going to be super soon. You never know when somebody says they're ready for something and you don't see them for months.
How many people do you need this time?
Three. And yeah, my guess would be three, four, five, six weeks, something like that.
Okay.
There was actually one aspect of the more recent, the recreation improvements project required an additional fifty feet of, I think it was fifty feet of fence to be added to the fence that was approved with the two thousand sixteen application. The fence is part of the buffer that this landscape committee will be looking at along with some landscaping and other things. It's all on one linear property line, sort of limited, but there's, it's, there's still stuff to look at.
Okay. At least I'd like to try to get two members tonight. I know we have a couple of members who are absent and I would be reaching out. So does anyone would like to volunteer? I'm on the backup. You will? Thank you, Lauren. Second? I'll second. Paul?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Do I have a third or do we?
Oh.
Mr. Crane?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've got the full committee.
Pardon me. Will we have a set plans to look at when we go out there?
Oh, yeah, I'll give you what you need.
Yeah, give all the documentation, Mr. Crane. As well as the condition.
The resolution.
The resolution with the condition that we have to look at. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Banish? Madame Chair. Is yours demographic and housing summary element? Oh, sorry, I have the minutes. Yes, sorry. A motion to approve the draft minutes from May third. Mr. Deputy Mayor McNally, Ms. Mastroangelo, and Ms. Manduke are, cannot vote. So can I have a motion from the remaining members, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you very much. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And we have two abstentions. Okay, Mr. Banish, demographic and housing summary and a review of the prior element, which is the circulation plan. So it's up to you how you want to handle it.
I'll start with circulation, if we may.
Okay.
If I may, please. I sent you a marked-up copy of the circulation plan element with corrections addressing the comments that I received from Ms. Mastroangelo and Mr. Crane, as well as the comments that I received from the board the last week. Since I mailed out those changes, Mr. Crane called something to my attention, which prompted the corrections that I just distributed to you this evening. And it seems, these are the fourth, fifth, and sixth pages. I'm not sure why they're unnumbered. I apologize for that. The real correction is on the sixth page, or the third page that I just distributed to you. And the corrections are found in the morning peak hour, enter and exit calculations for number four and number five. Number four is Braemar Partners Assistant Living Facility. It's a hundred beds. And number five is the LCB Senior Living Holdings at two nineteen Mount Airy Road. That's a hundred and five beds. Now, I want to explain to you what my mistake was. Say thank you to Mr. Crane for catching the mistake. I used the average daily traffic being generated from the facility, not the multiplier for the trip ends in the AM peak hour. That's why you see this precipitous drop from one hundred and thirty-seven trip ends entering the site on the AM peak hour for Braemar and a hundred and forty-four. And those numbers come way down. Because essentially what's happening during the peak hour is just a shift change. Most of the average daily traffic is generated throughout the course of the day. As visitors come and go, specialists arrive for treatments, things of that nature. But as you can see, when we look at the totals, at the bottom of the table, they had a tremendous impact on the amount of traffic that's actually being generated or that I said was being generated by all of these developments. It knocked down the three hundred and ninety-one morning peak hour trips to a hundred and forty. And the exiting trips, well, it's still traffic, but it's four hundred and eighty-two, two thirty-seven. And the overall AM peak hour impact was dropped from eight seventy-three to three seventy-seven. That's quite substantial. So, John, and then those changes also play out, but to a lesser extent, in the PM peak hour, where I actually used the correct multiplier in the seventh edition of the ITE manual, but the tenth edition of the ITE manual had updated multipliers, which affected those numbers slightly. But ever so slightly, as you can see in the calculator.
Up or down, the tenth edition?
It's up. Slightly more trips.
I think your beginning of peak hour total, though, should be going down, not up.
Where?
The last column.
No, actually, that goes up because we have a higher multiplier for the PM peak hour.
But I'm adding up the total.
But you just stepped the column.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. In other words, the four fifty-nine doesn't seem like it's the total.
I added it and it's...
Oh, I've got the wrong number there.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. I'll correct that.
I have three forty-four. I think. I'll do it again.
Yeah, that's a four, so that's looking right.
Let me add it again.
You know what? Got to check all those totals.
I will.
Evening peak, same thing. Yeah, the whole.
Three forty-four is what I get in that column.
It is what you got?
Yes.
That's what I had initially.
Go to the, you got to add all the columns, David. They're all off. If this is not a spreadsheet, they're pulling from somewhere in the wrong place.
It's a calculation function that I used. I didn't check them in the calculator. And so something's off there.
Yeah.
And I've got to go back and have.
Yeah.
So I will.
Yeah, just maybe double-check all of them.
I will. The first page, or actually, what's the fourth page of the document, but the first in the correction, identified the changes in the AM and peak hour trips, but I'll make sure those are correct as well. I'll go back and double-check them.
Oh, yeah, I see it down there.
And then Mr. Crane asked for some changes to a map that I haven't provided. And what I'm going to be doing is adding I seventy-eight all the way across the bottom of figure four. And I'm going to be adding two oh two on the northeast side of the town. Because those roads aren't shown, but they're of such significance and import that they should be shown. And they don't appear on that map, but that correction will be made in the fourth quarter. And then finally, with regard to mass transit, the discussion on page ninety-seven talks about New Jersey Transit buses.
We don't have page numbers.
Well, actually, later in the document, they do.
Oh, we do?
Much further down.
Oh, you're right. You're right.
Yeah, there's just a couple of them.
You're right. Sorry.
And what has to be changed here is that the express and local bus service has to be clarified that it's Lakeland.
Yes.
And I'll add all the stops in for Lakeland as well.
Yeah, Lakewood. It's Lakeland, not Lakewood.
Okay. That's going to be the second paragraph in New Jersey Transit, but I've got to make, I got to correct the last sentence in that paragraph. Excuse me. First paragraph, under the heading New Jersey Transit.
Yes.
The last sentence has to be corrected.
Mr. Plebierre is a, I think he's a traffic engineer.
He also does traffic engineering.
So you might want to consult with him, Mr. Banish, and as another.
Yeah, maybe have another set of eyes.
Another set of eyes.
I will ask him to take a look at it. And I don't know if any of you had any reactions or comments after you looked at it.
I just had a few typographical, which I can just give you.
Why don't you just give those to him?
Yeah, I don't want to take.
Yeah, one-on-one.
I mean, there was only, I think it was later, though, it was on the other, oh, no, under roadway improvements?
Yes.
You refer to a table in the last paragraph under roadway improvements. I just think it would be good to identify that by table number, which I believe is V hyphen three.
Okay. And...
You say the following table.
Yes, okay. I think I say that three times before I finally, in the last sentence, say table V or five, three.
Yeah, it would just, I was like, where, what table?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Well, yes, you say it at the very end. Exactly.
Yeah, I think I referenced that table at least twice more.
So I wouldn't say that was a typo. That was more of a clarification.
Does the board want to see the circulation plan again with the changes that Mr. Banish is going to make in the numbers? Yeah, because I think Mr. Plebierre is going to work, so maybe we'll have another round of this. Usually we only have two rounds, but I think this one, we'll probably do a third one in the June meeting.
Okay.
Sorry, I have one more thing.
Yes.
The last page, you're talking about a narrow bridge on White Neck Road?
Yes.
And a suggestion that they install cautionary reduced speed signs. There is already cautionary reduced speed signs there that are twenty miles per hour. So, just so you know.
Not doing the trick, though, huh?
Well, it's not terrible, but I just wanted you to know that it's already been, it's in, it is already there.
Okay.
Dave, it's interesting with the, wasn't there like a reduction of four hundred counts on the office building in Mountain View? Something to that effect, if memory serves me right?
That seems about right. It was a big number.
Makes sense, because people come in during...
With these new numbers, there might be a net, no net increase here, if you count the reduction in the office.
Yeah, but now it's spread out over town instead of just that one intersection.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just one more. The, on your first page, which is page four.
Yes.
The second-to-last paragraph, you're referencing the Trip Generation Manual, seventh edition.
Yes.
Okay, which was the tenth edition you were referencing? That's the...
Well, that's where the correction came from.
Okay, so you have to correct that, too.
Is it from the tenth or the seventh?
Well, it's written from the seventh. Is it the seventh or is it the tenth?
It's written from the seventh, with the exception of those two assisted living facilities where I got new numbers from the tenth.
Maybe you ought to put some comment in.
Yeah, but are you saying the tenth has the same numbers as the seventh?
No, they do not. I'll straighten it out.
Yeah, I'm saying you should use the tenth for everything.
Okay.
Not use the seventh for some and the tenth for others.
But is the tenth totally supersede the seventh? Does the tenth totally supersede the seventh?
Put it this way.
Yes. I think you have to say yes.
They add studies to it, so as the additions go up.
It should be, the tenth is the right, it should be more accurate, yeah. Why, that's where I think we could for Mr. Plebierre to get involved in this.
Madam Chair, who's the person you're talking about? I don't recognize them.
Larry Plebierre.
The board engineering expert.
Oh.
He also does traffic engineering.
Traffic.
Now I know. Don't see him much.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? We'll get another pass on this in the second meeting in June.
And shall we move on?
Yeah.
The demographic and housing summary. Unfortunately, we don't have twenty twenty census data. We don't have a comprehensive database from which to work. So we had to pull numbers out of the...
ACS?
That's right, out of the American Community Survey.
Is there any idea? Has the census given any indication of when they're going to get that level of data?
Couldn't find anything on their website about that.
Okay.
They do publish the releases that are available already, but they don't forecast when stuff is coming out. Or at least I didn't find a forecast for New Jersey data. So consequently, what I think, if you drill down in these numbers and you look at them, you're going to see a number of inconsistencies throughout. And it's because we had to go to different data sources to basically complete the data. And so there are anomalies. That one such would be, we have a higher number of one-person households than we, than shows up in another table. You're going to see anomalies like that, like four hundred more one-person households instead of one...
He's got a footnote, the source.
They are, throughout.
Right, so people will see.
Everything is sourced. Each table is sourced.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you all had that reaction to this when you read it or not, but I thought it was something I should probably bring up because I had a suspicion that some of you might.
When is the projection that this thing, that the whole master plan update will be done?
That's what I was going, the end of this year.
Right, this...
The very end of this year.
Right, it's possible.
It could, you know, that was my point. I was going to make the point that if we get the level of census data that we need, we might want to plug it in before the, we have the final public hearing and the final vote.
Absolutely.
If it becomes available.
If it becomes available, yeah.
I guess we just have to keep checking.
Yeah, we have to keep checking.
It would be helpful.
Sure would.
Well, I think it tells a pretty good story on its face anyhow.
It does.
Oh, it does. No, I mean, it certainly does.
Any comments or any particular aspects of this?
I mean, there was nothing I grabbed that shocked me, you know. We've sort of known some of these parameters in our town for a long time.
Yeah.
I mean, my only comment would be, you know, you talk about the housing stock with the, it was in this section, the affordable, I mean, the new developments.
Mm-hmm.
I just thought it might be interesting to put in there the affordable housing actual numbers for each development. Because, you know, we're held to a certain number of affordables anyway. I mean, I know it doesn't encompass all of them, but most of these developments were part of that whole filter remedy, right?
Yes.
Three.
Crown Court, Dewey Meadow, and Mountain Park.
So when I describe each inclusionary development, I'll explain how many market rate units are in there and how many affordable units are included in the approval or in the development.
If you don't mind.
Not at all. Kind of walked around that just because they're new units.
Yeah.
But sure, I'll put it in.
I think in Mountain View, the sixty townhomes are strictly market.
They are.
They are.
Yep, that's right. And there's a couple of roads, actually, that are referenced. I have to go back to the circulation plan for a minute. Mine Brook Road is actually Mine Brook Road. It's not Old Mine Brook Road. It, the name of that road was, I think, inaccurately referenced in the twenty-ten master plan. But I went back and I looked at the tax maps to double-check.
Well, Mine Brook Road is two oh two also.
That's what they call the Bernardsville area.
Yeah.
It's Morris Town.
Morris Town Road.
Morris Town Road when it gets in the Hardee. And then when it gets in the Bernardsville, it kind of goes in the Bernardsville, then all, then, you know.
Because in, I mean, on my GPS and everything, it's Mine Brook Road.
On your GPS?
It has an official, they adopted a resolution, I think the last time, two thousand nine, but identifying for database purposes, identifying the official street names of all the streets in town along with the official abbreviation. So things, names seem to be properly abbreviated in various databases. So when you search for something, if you use like MT Mary for Mount Airy, it comes up with a, just like, say, Mount Airy, you know, the different ways you can name roads, like N to east or G in east or north or south and, or NO or SO.
Yes.
But as part of that exercise, the official road names that you see on the tax maps were actually adopted by the...
Should send that to, should send that to David.
Yeah, so you're saying on that, Mine Brook is Mine Brook, not Old Mine Brook.
Yeah.
So he's right.
Well, we had this conversation. I probably should have given you this background. I apologize. But Dave, thanks. Thanks for having me. No, sorry about that.
And then I mentioned that Mountain View is one word, two words, capitalized, not capitalized. I said we've got to be consistent in this throughout the process.
Mountain View is two words. The name of the entity that owns.
Is one word.
Mountain View Corporate Center is Mountain View.
Ah.
I mean, I see Mountain View one word spelled on, people who list their address on the racial letterhead and everything else, it's not, Mountain View Boulevard, they spell it one word. Pretty sure in Warren, there's a Mountain View one word.
There's a mountain, there is a mountain avenue and all of that and Boulevard and Warren.
The things you learn.
So you'll be striking the old from that.
Yes. I will.
Thank you.
Yeah, assuming that... Yeah, assuming that, we're all in agreement. I know, little stuff.
A little level of detail.
Annoying stuff.
That's what we're saying, the little, the little things.
I know. Well, it's the little things that drive you crazy.
That's what you judge by.
Oh, yeah.
And take a little bit of time to figure it out.
Yeah, that would have driven me nuts to, that there was a mistake in the two thousand ten, that was a head scratcher.
Oh, I spent time on it.
I bet you did.
Cause I looked at it for a number of different eggs.
Yes, Miss Mass Frenchel.
I, I know we closed the, the, we did, the circulation, yes, I, I forgot to ask us.
What, you have a circulation question?
That's right.
Figure fi, V dash three, figure says, I don't know if it's table or figure, but I guess it's figure. So you have these suggested roadway improvements, but you just have numbers, whereas in the other tables, you identify what it is. So it would be nice to have, like, number one, you have them in general areas, which I can assume that, do you understand what I'm saying?
So what are you asking?
No.
I'm asking you to say, what, what is the roadway improvement, it, it, number one is what?
In other words, you have a, do you have a table or a key map?
A table, yeah, like, is one Interstate two eighty-seven?
Let's look at the first one, that, that reads Mount Mary and Southbound I two eighty-seven off.
No, 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 this.
Not figure, what's, what's number one?
What do those numbers mean, is what she's asking.
There's a legend on that map that somehow didn't appear.
Ah ha.
Okay.
Yep, they're, they're actually written out.
Okay, good.
It must match V dash three. Because there's seventeen of these and there's seventeen numbers.
Oh, I see, so.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it's on a separate sheet, the numbers are on the plan.
But it's not, it wasn't in the, okay, didn't.
But doesn't that match the sev, V dash three?
Seventeen, yes. I don't know about the seven, but one page has where they are, the map just shows the numbers.
Yeah, because there's seventeen.
I see.
Which figure is this, Kathleen?
Dave, go, go up and take a look.
Number three.
V three.
So, but where it was in relation to my packet.
No, no, that actually does not have a legend, and I'll put a legend on it.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, does it match V dash three? Cause there's seventeen of those in V dash three.
It's probably that.
And there's seventeen of these, and I'm looking at number eleven, and it looks like it's definitely Ridge High.
Yep, that's right.
Those all, those all check out.
So all you gotta do is put a note on the map saying C.
C.
Would you prefer that?
C table, V dash three.
That's fine.
It just came in a weird, so that was not in the same, I guess it wasn't in the same area of sequentially, do you know what I'm saying? That's fine, I understand that relates, but it was.
Yeah, he's gotta put a note on there so that people know when you're looking at that.
C, V dash three.
Well, I'm gonna put it right in the heading of the table, I'm gonna say, C figure V three.
Perfect. That's great.
That's fine.
Okay.
And then you can say, C ta, on the figure, you could say, C table, or whatever it's called.
V three.
V, V, Temple V.
Cross reference, cross reference.
There we go. Like the crossies, man.
Okay. Good catch, Kitty.
Yeah, that's good, I thought we were talking about two, figure, figure two, which does have a legend.
It does.
Yep, okay, but no, all right.
Does anybody have any questions or other comments about housing and the demographic?
I, I have a couple.
Yeah, go ahead, okay.
Page forty, David, on item three. I think you added one column extra in there, I think it's more like fifty-seven percent instead of eighty-one.
Where are you, Mr. Craig?
Page forty, we're on the Democratic Housing, right?
Yep.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're on the right plan.
Yep.
Okay, so on page forty, housing stock, number three, it says eighty-one percent of Burns Townships moved into their residence before two thousand.
Listen, you're looking at one thing, they're looking at something else, we gotta get apples and apples.
No, it, there's a list, under the heading Housing Stock, number three, I think is what John's referring to, is that correct?
Yeah.
Chapter three.
Housing.
Construction.
Maybe it printed differently?
Oh, 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 I see, I see.
Where are we?
We're on page forty in the stock. On the PDF, it's page forty, chapter three.
Up here, number, okay.
Do I have a different thing there, I'm looking at something totally different here.
Right up here.
Yeah, it's different.
I don't know, I'm looking at what you sent me, I have no idea.
Let me find the page for you, Kitty, but I don't know what happened.
I, I printed what I was given. I've got something totally different. I have nothing like that, nothing, I never got it.
This is the, this is the old one, the existing one, this is not the.
No, this is a new one with twenty-twenty, I never got that.
Yeah, this is the first draft of this, right, this is the first draft.
I have no idea, that's all I printed.
That's traffic or circulation.
I guess I didn't get something.
Well, you can share with me.
Okay, Mr. Craig?
Let's try again.
Okay, so, so just, just make a note on, on my page forty, item three under Housing Stock, it says eighty-one percent, and then, then if you go to page. Page fifty-one, it says tenure of housing, households at the bottom, it repeats that eighty-one percent.
Well, this is first draft.
They're, they're consistent, but I'll go to the table, I don't, I think there's.
Is it eighty-one or eighty-two?
Eighty-one. Burns Township.
But then fifty-one, it said eighty-two.
Eighty-two Somerset County.
Oh, understood.
No, that, what I'm just saying, if you go to, what I'm trying to say is, go, go to table, the table on page fifty-two, three dash thirteen. I think you added, Dave, the two thousand ten, two thousand fourteen to get your eighty-one percent, it should be twenty-four percent less, if I'm reading that chart right. If you add those first three numbers, it's less than eighty-one, like fifty-seven, I think. That twenty-four, I think, shouldn't have been added in there, or it should be rewritten up to two thousand fourteen.
Dave, do you understand what John's talking about?
I do.
And I can't get anything here, cause I can't get the feed that you have in.
Cindy, do you have an extra?
I have it.
Cindy's gonna give you.
I don't have anything in writing.
I know Cindy's gonna give you hers.
Oh, great, it's different.
What's this?
Page twenty.
John, I'm gonna have to go back and look at that, this might be an example of different data sources giving you different numbers, but I'll try to put all that in alignment so that it makes sense.
This is just formatted.
The form.
You're saying number two?
Yeah, I'm just adding it up, if you add the twenty-four, and two thousand ten to two fourteen, you get to the eighty-one.
Here, just look at mine.
So I think if you, if you wrote, if people that moved in two thousand fourteen, it would be eighty-one percent, I just think you want one column, too high. You added that one extra row that you should, maybe shouldn't have.
Okay.
If I'm, if I'm interpreting this right. Yeah, yep. Same.
Maybe that's an artifact.
No, it's the same thing, it's the same problem, because if you look, this would be two thousand, so you would just add these numbers.
I got part of it, I didn't get a lot of it.
That's right, it's incomplete and I don't know why.
I got the tables, I think it's the introduction.
I can't figure that out. But the next time I send it to you, I'm gonna follow it up.
Base and gender. I got some of it, I didn't get a lot of it.
Oh.
I got all the tables.
Is, is it possible that you had front and back and you only sent that one side?
You're right, you're right. Yeah, yeah, Andrew picked up something else, the, the one.
It looks like I got part of it, I didn't get the front, I started out in introduction.
Well, I think I know how to avoid this going forward, and it was something that Kathleen had asked for some time ago, and that was to have the documents emailed in PDF format.
Yes, PDF.
That's right, this one came, this one came as a Word document.
Cause I got the tables.
Yeah, send it to PD.
But Word gets very funky, Word's very funky, depending on what version of Word you add.
Right, correct, send it as a PDF, that's the answer.
Send it out in PDF.
I think so.
In fact, you know what the difference is, you printed from David's, we printed from Cindy, Cindy sent them out as a PDF.
I sent everything out as a PDF.
That's what's, that's the difference.
Ah, I printed it, I printed out the doc.
Boom.
That's it.
That's it.
So you've gotta do the PDF.
I will.
I got the tables and I got all the wording on the tables.
That's why.
Okay.
Mystery solved.
Okay.
Mystery solved. Let's move on to the next one.
Yeah, the, for some reason, I can't find it, you, you mentioned one, the housing stock as attached, single family, and homes more than two units. I can't find that page, I'm, I'd just like to describe what, for some reason, I'm looking for that.
There's discussion about that in a couple of different places.
Yeah, but you mentioned one and two family, and then more than two-family dwellings, I just think we should describe what that is, I'm assuming the one is townhomes and the others might be condos in your breakup.
They, for the most part, are, the attached housing, for the most part, are the condominiums.
And then the other ones would be just townhomes, single family, that are attached, would be townhomes in, in your description there?
Well, where they, where, where they're described, where, where I'm describing a single-family detached home, it's described as a single-family detached home. But, single-family residences can be condominiums, and so that may be some of the.
Yeah, for some reason, I can't find.
Some of the question that you're raising here.
It, it seemed to me that when you said more than two, you would describe that as a condo, and where it's, it's more than two, attached, single family, you would think that would be a townhome. The way you broke it up, for some reason, I can't find it, but it's, it's in here somewhere.
Are you looking for the definition, John?
Uh, once, when I read this, I'm having a hard time figuring out what that really means, yeah, if I have a hard time, maybe somebody else might.
Yeah, I, well, the Census Bureau's definition is.
Oh, I, I know, here it is.
What page is it?
I don't have pages, I have a color.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, never mind, I didn't say that.
So, there is one paren, single-family detached, one paren, single-family attached.
By the way, single-family attached is not a townhouse.
It's not?
No, I mean, townhouse, townhouse would be multi-family, I, I, I guess, I guess it could be single-family attached.
But then it have two or more units, so I, I.
Two or more, two more units?
Well, like, I don't know where I fit in this one.
Yeah, I think, he just has to find out wherever you got those descriptors from, whatever that source is, throw a footnote in, and there's gotta be a definition with it.
Right.
I may add some limited definitions from the Census Bureau's glossary.
Right.
It's fairly extensive, but I had to reference them myself.
Well, he's just trying to figure out how you're defining these, these in Burners Township.
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I'm thinking that second category is, is what you would think is a townhome, and the other would be a condo where you wouldn't have a roof over your head.
Right.
Like a, like a townhome would have.
Units and structure.
Here it is.
Towards the end.
You're thinking the attached means on the side, and not.
I, I'm saying attached could be townhomes, but the, the, the more than two or whatever, the third definition.
Two or more, that could be townhomes.
That could be something that doesn't have a roof over you, that's how you would define a condo.
Listen, ready for this, no one knows, you're gonna look, next issue.
Okay, okay. The, the, the other.
We have trailers?
On, on my page fifty-four.
Yes, we do.
Under table three dash fifteen.
Trailers?
It says, lack of complete plumbing, eighty-three. I, I just, I don't know if we really wanna put this in here, cause I don't believe it.
Do we have mobile homes and trailers in town?
We have eighteen of them.
No, you have to put that in.
Eighteen of them? At two hundred forty?
In Somerset County.
Somerset County.
Somerset County, but eighteen?
I don't think so.
I wouldn't think we have two.
Pardon me?
I wouldn't believe we have two, so I'm shocked that you're eighteen.
Eighteen?
What table, John, are you looking at?
It's table three dash fifteen.
David, what is the category for the, your affordable housing obligation is rehab, the rehabilitation need, right? Is defined as if you have a unit that has deficient plumbing, or major structural systems, or what are the other?
Weatherization is one of them.
Right, so, do you recall what the township's rehabilitation obligation is, is it zero?
Not of hand, but I recall adjusting it because there was.
Oh, I know one where it was in a town.
But put it this way, is it zero?
No.
If it's not zero, that means you have very few, but you have some units in the township that either have, they lack complete plumbing, they're either overcrowded, or you have a structural problem with the roof, and you have a rehabilitation obligation to throw some money at it out of your affordable housing trust fund. The only thing I would ask is to check to see if the figures in this table three dash fifteen are consistent with the township's rehabilitation obligation. If it's lower on the table, no problem, but if it's higher, problem.
I, I just.
Without going into any detail, do you know what I'm talking about?
I just have a, I just have a problem going from two thousand ten to zero to eighty-three, unless this is the answer.
Yeah, eighty-three units.
Yeah, you gotta check, because I don't think, I don't think your rehabilitation obligation is eighty-three units.
How'd we jump? Well, I'm just wondering if the Census.
Eighteen mobile homes and trailers?
We just came up with.
No way.
I, I can picture one, I know one.
Wait, you know, that might, that might be Burnersville. That's a joke, that's a joke.
You're on the record.
That's a joke.
But there's nothing wrong with it. Steinfield.
You know, you know of a trailer?
I, I just pictured one.
Dave, I'm just wondering if the Census blew that number, cause it says Bureau Census.
These, there, there is a big problem with these numbers.
Okay, okay.
There, there are some problems with these numbers.
Okay.
Let me just explain generally, particularly with regard to this number that we're talking about, and that is lacking complete plumbing, or overcrowded units. These are derived from the age of the housing stock, typically.
Yeah, but you know what, you have to go to a different source, the source you should be using is the source that was used in the settlement with Fair Share Housing Center. Because that source was researched by the construction department. Those are real numbers researched in Burners Township, and these are based on extrapolations from using, you know, what year the housing stock is, based on averages developed all over the country.
That's right.
You should change the source.
I think we're gonna take the table out.
I, I think.
Yeah, you know what, take the table out, it's even better idea.
It just, it just looks bad for the township that you got eighty-three homes that are like.
Well, I tried to qualify that at least in one spot explaining, but I think, I, I think it's, it's raising too much confusion, it's coming in.
Yes. When do we anticipate the twenty-twenty census data to be available, any ETA?
I don't know, I, I couldn't, I couldn't find a projected date for the release for our town.
Dave, I'm, I'm thinking just eliminate it, I don't have any.
Right, what do we need that for?
I don't know if it adds any value.
Table three fifteen is gonna be taken out, and the discussion about it's gonna be taken out.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And I would really like to know if we really have eighteen trailers.
I think that was an extrapol, that probably was, because remember, they, Census Bureau cannot go out and count everything.
I, I think they're off White Neck Road.
Correct.
So they use parameters, they use, they have, they base, they have a number that they do go out and see and count, and then they extrapolate using data for all these other sets of numbers.
Then it's very suspect.
It's being removed, it's out.
It's being removed.
The section's coming out, there's no need for it.
This is table, this is table three dash twelve, that's going out?
Fifteen.
Now she's referencing it.
I've got three dash fifteen.
I know, three dash fifteen is going out, but I'm talking about mobile homes.
No, no, she's, she's talking about this one.
Well, we'll have to take it out.
No, no, three dash twelve.
No, three dash fifteen.
Well, the category is actually mobile home, trailer, other.
See, my three dash, three dash twelve.
Without referencing the definition that they use for mobile home, trailer, other.
It might be other.
What is it, tent?
No, it might be other, in other words, it might not be any mobile homes, it might be other.
The other, right, there's eighteen other.
What is other?
Hey, that's what you have to ask him, don't ask me.
It could, it could be, it could be manufactured housing, that doesn't look like a trailer or a mobile home, but I don't know, and so.
We have to get, well, are we gonna take this out or not?
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at that one. Well, that one, I'm not sure until I.
Three twelve doesn't come out, that it just has to be clarified, three fifteen, it could be, you had the wrong numbers on there.
Because I, I have wrong everything at this point, I, I'm just really just gonna sit here, because.
I, I, I can give you mine, why don't you take your mine, make it feel better.
Devoting.
I'll offer Kathleen.
Go ahead, send it to me.
No, I'm fine, I'll just, I'll print the right one when I get back to. No, I'm fine. I'll just, I'll print the right one when I get back to my house. From Cindy, which was the PDF.
That's right.
Well, that's what I'm focusing on now.
I think we need this to go out again, Mr. Panis.
Oh, I'm sure. Oh, I'm, I'm clear. There are some revisions needed. We're having, have any other comments?
Yeah, I, I didn't, I was unable to print out the last minute.
Haven't you had enough comments?
I actually don't wanna go deeper on this, but I think it's really my half, my half...
You got deep enough.
I have to ask.
Good.
But it, it, this is census data.
I, I just gotta say, there's a lot of good information.
Pardon?
Most of it is very good stuff.
It is good.
Yeah.
Oh, it's...
Well done.
I like the electric charging information.
From what I, from what I, I grabbed, it sounded good.
I did. I liked the new updated part of the electric charging, the requirements was, and I like that you identified where they were. Which shows me we don't have many.
No.
Tesla specific.
We really don't have any. We have a Tesla, but that's for Tesla.
Tesla specific at Dewey Mill, right?
We have two in, live in the Fellowship Village.
Yeah, you gotta sneak into, into Fellowship Village.
I could blend right in.
If you go see a show, you can plug your car in while you're watching the show.
Well, I got, they said, you said those were public, so you...
Right.
I, yeah, I think they are.
Yeah.
Are they?
Go watch a show, plug your car in. Two for the price of one.
All right. How we doing, Kippy?
Here, this is how we're doing. Kippy, show them how we're doing. That's how we're doing. That's about summer, right? If it was cold, it'd be fire starting in the air, all right? That's how we're doing.
That's how we're doing.
We're reenacting.
This was all rock.
All right.
Okay.
Anybody have baby formula?
Oh, please.
I bet you feel better now.
Okay, so we're going to have another housing stock, but I will go home and I'll print the PDF version that Ms. Kiefer sent and I will review it and get it back to you.
Well, your comments yesterday were very helpful on this, so you managed to get some of the substance of it.
It read fairly well to me, you know?
You just missed all the parts that John Gray got.
You printed the wrong one out. Did you like it then?
Oh boy. Okay, this has been the, the end of a very interesting day.
Sorry about that. I apologize.
What is the next master plan element that we're doing?
Yeah, well, uh, what, where are we? After we have the two sets of corrections, I have H E F S P.
That's the housing element in the Fair Share Plan.
That's already done.
Already done.
That's done. Green community. Is that what? You have, Mr. Schley?
Yeah.
Green community.
Mm-hmm. I think we're working on that right now.
Was that green acres?
No.
No, no, I meant...
Green building, green...
Oh, 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 housing.
That's green, whatever.
I wasn't being sassy.
I thought you were trying to be nasty.
No, 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 I was...
Green acres?
That's the phrase.
Green acres is the conservation.
And after that, we have parks and rec.
No, I meant... We're real.
I think we're gonna adjourn this meeting.
I think so. Hit the gravel.
Hey, this is the funniest meeting I've ever been to for...
I'd lose it.
Someone take Kippy's drink. What's in there?
We better check and see if there's carbon monoxide floating around in here.
Read on.
I mean, I'm looking at this, I'm going, I don't see anything that you're talking. Okay, green community or parks and rec?
Uh, green community.
And that's about green initiatives?
Uh, gen- yeah, general policies to be encouraged.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
At all levels, I imagine.
Yes.
Oh.
It was.
Okay.
Do we have a section in the old master plan for that, or is that a new section?
Got a new?
Nope, that one, that one is there.
It's there.
Okay, thirteen.
And some of it, some of it's somewhat dated. And so it may be changed and there is an additional requirement now with the land use plan element that may supplant that.
Okay.
I'm gonna take a look at that and I'm gonna write you a memo about that.
Great, thank you.
And tell you which way we're gonna go with that.
All right. So we're going to see round three of circulation, round two of housing and demographic.
That's right.
And then we'll see green community.
Yes.
Okay.
Because we have a lot of master plan meetings coming up.
Yep.
Good.
We're going through our schedule. Yes, there were some green initiatives in the land use, MLUO.
Right. Green buildings and environmentally sustainable plan element.
And I think that's what this was supposed to be. It may have been, it may have been prepared before it was authorized in the MLUO.
Let me ask you this. What about, where is, if anywhere, the storm resiliency stuff?
That's gonna have to go into the land use plan element.
Oh, land use, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
So, so, so how many more do we have?
We have, we have, um, we have a parks and rec.
Yep.
Comparison to other plans.
It's pretty easy.
And land use.
Yeah, then we gotta come back to the big boy.
Yeah, yeah.
Eventually, yeah, we're gonna have to come back.
Um, I imagine parks and rec is gonna be a fairly big element. There's a lot going on in parks and rec.
There is?
I mean, a lot of stuff that we have to talk about in comparison to rec. And then comparison to other plans, is that across other municipalities?
Yeah, it's gonna look at adjoining zoning and it's gonna look at other, um, regional and state plans.
Okay, so that's a pretty hefty section, right?
It's kind of a consistency determination and typically a fairly lightweight.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it may be a number of pages, but it's not, you know, it's not something you probably could dig your...
Right, because you can't make changes to other people's stuff.
You can't make other people's stuff. You can just say the comparison, yeah.
We can't change Burnersville? I'm just kidding.
Maybe we get those trailers.
It was a joke. It was a joke.
Warren, we got Burnersville, Warren, Harding. We...
Long Hill.
Bridgewater, we touched Bridgewater also down at the southern tip. So we have a number of plans that we have to... Okay, any other, any other questions or comments?
No, thank you for everything tonight.
We know what you meant, but if you look at the recording, you wouldn't know what you meant. Thanks a lot. That's pretty funny.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna open it up for public comment for what we discussed tonight. Mr. Edelstein, good evening.
We didn't get your nameplate for that chair yet, did we?
Right. Just identify yourself for the record.
Todd Edelstein, one seven two Riverside Drive. A single family house attached, wouldn't that be like a house with a garage attached?
Todd, we have no idea.
We have no idea.
You can look it up.
Okay, for a circulation plan. I, I forgot to mention this last time, but I, it probably is gonna be a big thing. On Valley Road on the border of Long Hill, Long, Long Hill Township and us, they're taking that bridge out. They're putting a new bridge in, DOT, and that, they came in about two years ago and they still haven't come with the plans to actually do it yet. So that's a, a big future thing, because they're gonna close that road down and we have to work out, um, detours.
Two counties.
It's a county and two counties.
Two county road.
Yeah.
It's five twelve. It's five twelve.
Oh, is it there? I, I own.
Yes, future improvements.
I don't remember you saying anything.
We didn't have a discussion about it, but I included it in a list of, um...
Future improvements.
Okay, well, if you, if you call it, that's, that's great. I'm not throwing grenades here. I'm just trying to add to the conversation.
Just kidding.
Yeah, he's just kidding.
Yeah, here it is.
I had a... Do we have in, um, I guess the housing characteristics, do we have, could we add, or should we add in the number of septic systems we have in town? Or a number of houses that have, um, wells?
Some of it's in the utility plan, I think. We have sewer areas.
We did talk about wells.
We did have sewer areas and wells.
Yeah, did we have sewer areas in the utility plan?
Yeah.
We had a table that showed...
We had public water.
Yeah, there was a table.
Okay, so... I, I only...
We definitely have a table on it.
Yeah.
Well, I, I was, you know, when, I was looking at table fifteen that you're not gonna be using. You know, lacking complete plumbing, and I was kinda confused because it doesn't really say anything, you know, what is, you know, indicators of housing conditions, like now you're saying it's for, you know, um, wherever type of housing. And I was thinking something totally different from lacking the plumbing.
Well, you know, it was, it was discussed a moment ago, um... That this is part of the township's affordable housing obligation and when that number was initially included in the township's third round obligation, the township conducted some investigations and actually had that number reduced through the procedures that are available through, um, affordable housing compliance. And so that number's already been challenged and reduced.
It's in the housing element in Fair Share Plan.
Yep, that's right.
That's where it belongs.
Oh, you were, you were talking about the, um, trailers and I know in the two thousand and ten book, it, it has zero. So we actually gained eighteen, so...
We don't, again, that we...
We're getting rid of the thing, man. Come on. It's coming out.
We're, and that is an extrapolated number that could be totally bogus.
Yes, it's not a real number.
Well, I was just wondering, maybe people gotten trailers because they wanna escape the moving on.
No.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's a bad, listen, the, unfortunately, unfortunately, the census data is, uh, well, John said extrapolations and as did the chairwoman, and it's based on generalized information that's gleaned from their experience surveying the entire country and surveying New Jersey and surveying the region. And so they're estimates. They're not actual counts. They're estimates. And so they're bad estimates. That's pretty much all I can say about it.
That's why they're being removed, because they're not accurate. And if it's not accurate, it doesn't belong in there, in my opinion.
But I don't know if the master plan would do this or not, but instead number of rooms for additions, if we had a percentage of the house being expanded. So, you know, because some houses, they say, well, it's an addition, but this addition would make a, a ranch into a, a massive McMansion. My concern basically is, this is the planning board, but you go to the zoning board meetings and people are always coming in for a lot of variances and so they refer back to the master plan and you hear, always hear undersized lots and they're always looking for hardship variances, which I kind of hard believe unless the person who lives in the house when they changed, um, the zoning back then, that they didn't already know the house was undersized lot. And I can't, don't know why they would call hardship. They know that it was a small lot already, but they're looking for variances to expand the house that we shouldn't. And it just seems crazy that you keep on giving variances when it just makes it even worse for everybody else who lives around those.
We don't have jurisdiction over use variance with Mr. Edelstein.
Yeah, but doesn't the plan it?
He's, what he, he's looking for language in the master plan to discourage that, because when the Board of Adjustment has an application as the second prong of the negative criterion, they have to consider what's in the master plan. I think that's the point he's trying to make.
Yes.
The twenty-ten...
I don't know exactly what you put in there, but that's the point he's trying to make, is he'd like to see something in the master plan.
Let's talk about this just for a minute and we're, we're gonna come back to it much later.
I wanna correct one thing you said.
Yes.
Like, A, that would be the land use element, but B, there's case law that says just because someone buys knowing the hardship goes from owner to owner. So that's, that's a dispute you're gonna have with the courts.
Okay.
Okay, there's nothing the planning board in a master plan can do about that, but this is the wrong master plan section.
The wrong, wrong chapter. Okay, um...
The wrong chapter.
Okay, well, I always saw, you know, demographics, so I'm looking at that. I'm not getting the stuff you have, so...
Yeah.
So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we wrapped this up and we know what we're gonna do in June.
Mm-hmm.
For our June, uh, would be seven, uh, twenty-first, June twenty-first would be our master plan meeting.
Correct.
Uh, since Mr. Seville is not gonna be here, I'd like to have him excused. Can I have a motion to excuse him, please? Does that move? Thank you.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we know what's on the agenda for June eighth besides the adoption of loan resolution right now?
June seventh? I was gonna get to that. Okay. Okay, comments from members? Comments from staff? We do have, um, just before we close, we do have two applications on June seventh. We have Faison Ahmad, no, Ahmad Kirkwood, and we have Fellowship Village. You've received your packet on that for the lifting of the condition. And then we would have the Moyet Resolution.
Yeah, correct. Um, so I'm gonna make a suggestion for people that are new to Fellowship Village. Let's ask Cindy to send out the underlying resolution.
Okay.
So, because there's a whole bunch of factual findings and then the conditions, so you can see why the board imposed the conditions that they're gonna seek to have lifted.
And it is a fairly hefty resolution.
Yeah.
It's from the two thousand sixteen.
It was the original one, yeah. The one where they came in for...
It was granted on a four-three vote. Four in favor, three against, and it was all, it all, the no votes came down to the, um...
Fly Tower.
Area.
The Fly Tower on, on top of the stage.
The Fly Tower, no, no, yeah. On top of the cultural, cultural, on top of the stage.
Theater.
The theater, thank you.
Yes.
I remember reading about it.
Yeah, so, uh, my suggestion is read that resolution.
Am I the only one left to step through that?
You know what?
Might be, yeah.
I think I am.
Yeah, but there's, John's resolution has a good discussion about what the board took into consideration before they imposed those conditions.
Right.
And they're gonna come back and they're gonna argue that the way it's actually playing out, uh, is such that those conditions should, they should be relieved of those conditions. So, look at those findings of fact in there and then you'll at least understand why the board imposed the conditions.
Right, you'll have the background. It might, they might very well have a, you know, a really good point, but just read to see what the board at that time, what they were thinking, what they were presented with and why they did it, and then if, you know, from that last one, if circumstances have changed, circumstances have changed. But you, you guys are the judge of that. But I'd rather have you read it yourself from the, the board's resolution rather than ask me or ask these guys, because we're all third hand. That resolution is the first-hand information for where those conditions came from.
And just to be clear, um, Ahmad, Faison, Kirkwood, excuse me, um, is, has not had a final vote, so...
That's correct.
I've watched the, the, um...
Yeah, you're now eligible.
Right, you're now eligible.
Did you sign certification?
I have not seen.
I usually give them out on the date of the hearing, so the other...
Right.
Okay, you make sure you sign that thing.
Yeah, I, I, I have already told Cindy.
Yeah, I'll have it at your, and I know, Ms. Manduk, you were, you have to view the video and Deputy Mayor McNally.
Ma- Madam Chair, I won't be here on the seventh.
I, did you not recuse yourself from that one, Mr. Crane?
No, he didn't.
No, he voted.
I didn't. I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
Which one we're talking about?
I'm sorry, did you recuse yourself from? Kirkwood Faison.
Yes, no, no, no.
Okay.
You were in.
But you're not gonna be here on the seventh.
No, I'm gonna be out.
Yeah, so there's more reason that other people...
Yeah, we need everybody who, uh, to watch the video and certify on that one. Uh, Deputy Mayor McNally, I think you were not at the last Faison, I mean Ahmad Kirkwood hearing.
Did you say so, Madam Chairwoman?
I think you were not.
You were.
So, we appreciate everybody. I'll send out the link to you, too. Yeah.
And, and you have to hang in there, because... And, and you have to hang in there because-
Oh, wait, gosh.
I watched it contemporaneously, so I-
Right to the end, you gotta hang in to the end when you see the-
It was very lively.
Yes, and the motion that was made, which is a non-binding thing, but the applicant's out there doing, so you, you have to hear this whole thing, you can't just like even go ninety-five percent through, you have to go a hundred percent through.
It was very interesting, let me put it that way.
Yeah, it was one of the more interesting applications that I've heard in a very long time.
And it was a-
No, no, really, I mean-
Let's just say that the dialogue, there was a lot of dialogue with the applicant and the board throughout the hearing as opposed to, you know, one, you have the questions, you have the witnesses, it got very interactive between the board-
It's a good description.
And the applicant.
No, that's a very good description, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't, don't try to read that resolu- uh, read that transcript or view that meeting and read the Fellowship Village resolution in the same night.
Good, unusual question.
I don't think we'll get through, I don't think we're gonna get to the third item.
No way.
I, I don't know, I, I think I'm feeling that possibly, which one is gonna be first? Do we have any idea, we're gonna do Fellowship first? Right now, we have, let me see. Right now, we have, we have Fellowship Village.
Ahmad, Ahmad should be first.
Ahmad should be first, I would think.
If he doesn't come through with the signatures, then-
Well, yeah, I mean, they-
Well, you still, you still have to vote, but if he doesn't come through with the signatures, what the, you guys are gonna listen to the, the recording and see, but my recollection, let's just say, if he doesn't come through with the signatures, it's gonna be a no.
You still have to vote.
The signatures aren't binding. Right.
Only if he comes through with the signatures that it's possible to be a yes, but it still might be a no.
Still might be a no.
It could still go either way, even if he gets all the signatures.
It could still, even if he goes all the signatures, yeah.
Correct, that's what we're saying, if he doesn't get the signatures, we know what's gonna happen most likely, if he does get the signatures, I don't know what's gonna happen.
Wait a minute, we should not be talking about this at all without the applicant being here.
No.
Correct. Correct.
No.
But this is why people have to listen to the recording.
Right, you have to listen to the recording because-
We should probably do it first, though, right?
Yes.